Okay, I'll call the Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025, meeting of the Essex Junction City Council to order. Agenda additions and changes. I have one. Like to pull the minutes out and make them five E. Does anybody have anything else? Amber Marcus are online tonight? Yep, okay. So I'll move we, and then the agenda is suggested.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Marcus, we need one iron, yea or nay from you?
My apologies, I think you're talking to me, but I right now.
Nope.
No, you still say you're, yeah, you're quite a distance away.
Yep.
How about now?
Is it?
No, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if that mic is. Is it? Is it any better if I talk over here?
I can hear you better, Tim.
Tim, I can hear you without a microphone. Yeah, well, no, you're.
How about this one?
I can hear you, Regina.
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
You know, the one night I don't want to be heard. Figure this out. Okay, we were taking a vote on the amended agenda, so we have voted aye. How about the two of you?
What was the amendments? I apologize.
Okay, even that. Alright, we'll back up a step. We are moving the minutes from consent to be five E because there's a correction. I moved that we approved them. Elaine seconded. So the three of us voted aye, so how about you and Amber?
I would aye.
Excellent, great. That passes. So we'll move on to public to be heard. It's a portion of the meeting where members of the public can bring questions, comments, concerns to the board on items that are on the agenda or not for the evening. Is there anyone online? If there is, please raise your hand. While we're waiting for that, is there anyone in the room that has anything they want to talk about this evening? Nope, one in the room. I am not seeing any hands, but we're waiting for one person to sort of finish connecting, so I'll give it a moment.
Marcus is physically raising his hand.
Yeah, that.
Can I simply ask that we give some more gain on Raj's microphone?
Oh my goodness.
Still a problem?
Yeah, yeah, it's still a problem. And then when you look away at Raj, it fades off more so. You have to be looking right into it, but at the same time, I assume that there's an individual gain control on that and we just gave some more. I get his mic.
Do you hear me now? Is that any better? Good, good.
Not really.
Oh my goodness.
To be honest, it's low. In comparison to everything else, it's very low. And I did check my hearing aids, they are working.
I feel like I need some.
I think this is a benefit. I don't know what your issue is.
That's the volume right there, whatever that volume was.
That was good?
Alright.
Yeah.
So you didn't hear the stuff under my breath?
So I'm not seeing anyone online that has anything for public to be heard. There's no one in the room that does, so we're going to move on to five A, interview and consideration of Recreation Advisory Committee youth members. I understand, Marcus, you and Tim already interviewed one person previously.
Yep.
And tonight, we have, I need to get there, pardon me. Piper Goodkind, is that you? If you wouldn't mind coming right up to that seat next to that microphone. Hopefully your microphone's working. So if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, we have your application, we've read it, we're probably just talking to you for a few minutes. And so if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and kind of let us know your motivation for joining this committee.
Where's the camera? Like, should I look somewhere?
You can look right at us.
So it's not like I'm looking.
No, you can ignore that.
Perfect. I'm Piper. I'm a student at Essex High School. I'm a ninth grader. And one of my teachers had like recommended me for this and mentioned it to me. And I thought that it was a really cool opportunity and I think it's really awesome, like that I get to like be a part of this. I think this is really cool.
Excellent. Amber, Marcus, any questions from you two from?
Yes. I would just like to ask, based on reading your application, I am curious if you can share with me a highlight experience with, as being a participant in EGRP programs? And as you look at it now, because you're a user, based on, again, the application, you're a babysitter, you go over to the parks and use it, is there any areas of improvement that you could see as well?
Um, I mean, the last time I like specifically used like any of like the parks programs, like, sorry, any, um, like of the sports stuff, that stuff, um, I mean, that was all great. I think, I think with the parks, there was, trying to think, I think all, all the kids I have taken there, they beg for it. They absolutely love the park so much. It's fantastic. I wouldn't say there's anything I can necessarily think of at the moment that's like standing out to me that like something should be changed or like something done.
Let me go a step further then. Let me ask you, for, for kids your age, what do you think keeps some kids from using EGRP programs?
I'm sorry, what?
What do you think, what do you think keeps some youth your age from using EGRP programs?
Okay, um, I think, I don't know, it might be, if we're talking, are we talking like the camps? Or like sport sort of thing because?
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Okay, because I know for the EGRP sports, there's like kind of like an age limit a lot of the time, like I think it's like fourth, maybe fifth grade, like that kind of stops. And then it's like kind of, you go into school sports and like onto like clubs and stuff like that. I know, I know there's like some camps, I'm pretty sure. I don't know how far Camp Star goes, but that would be for like, I know my sister goes to that. She's in seventh grade. So I know like that's like a slightly older like category. I don't know like what the age limit is on that, but I think honestly just might be like the stigma of like kids like wanting to like, oh, like that's weird, like, I don't want to like, like I go to a camp, like I don't know if they, like, some people might find that like embarrassing. I don't know. My sister, my sister loves it. I've heard like other people, like her friends, like say that, but she still like loves it. Yeah, I mean, I think there's just a lot of like stigma around other people's opinions and like people just wanting to do what their friends are doing. Like, I don't think my sister would do it if any of her friends are doing it. She'd be like, oh yeah, I hate it too. It's awful. Like, I think it's a very like, everybody's influencing each other.
Yep. Awesome. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Again, I would just want to say thank you for putting your application in.
Yeah, totally. Thank you.
I think some of what you answered helped with some of my questions. I think I get the feeling you'll be very forthright with your, with what you're thinking with this group, which is good because you'll be up, how many people are in this? Nine? Eight, eight others?
Seven.
Seven. It's a large group.
Seven.
It's a large group of adults and I'm, I'm feeling confident that you're going to be able to go in and, and be heard.
Great.
Elaine, do you have more?
Yeah, Piper, can you talk a little bit about how you might bring the voices of high school students and younger students to EGRP to help with programming?
Yeah, um, I just want to bring like, I really just want to try and voice the like youth as much as I possibly can. Because I, I know when I, I did like a lot of the camps and I, like, there were times where like I absolutely loved it and there were times where like I was like, oh, like, like I have to go do this. So, I don't know. I feel like a lot of kids have a lot of different opinions and like ways they view the programs. And I kind of, I think it'd be really cool if everybody could absolutely like love it, even more than like people already do. Like, um, and I know for like kids more my age, there's a lot of people I know who are now like working at the camps and stuff like that. And like, that's something I want to do. I'm going to do that this summer, I think. Yeah, I just.
Great, thanks. No, that's great.
I know, I don't, after listening to you talk, I don't particularly have a question as it pertains to this, but while we're having informal, how was your first round of exams as a ninth grader? How was that experience?
Um, I have, I have a 504 plan.
Okay.
So it, I got to test in a different space and that was really nice. I had a pretty good experience.
You had a good experience?
Yeah, yeah. I wasn't like terrible or super stressful. It was, it was pretty good.
I, I, I think the, the teen voice to this committee is going to be an important one. So I really just wanted to say thank you for, for coming up. It's not, it's, it's only four of us and two folks online, but sometimes public speaking isn't, you know, everyone's forte. So I appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule this evening and coming up.
Do you see any challenges in participating in this? Your schedule moderately flexible?
Um, with my schedule, I do have, um, I'm currently playing basketball right now for my school team. And I do ha, I also play club volleyball. The volleyball, however, is more, that is more flexible. Um, as we like only have like a really a practice like once a week because it's a club and there's other sports, like, stuff like that. But for basketball, we have practice every day after school and we have games regularly. But that is wrapping up towards the end of February, so that won't be like much of a problem come then.
Great.
But right now, that's the only like big kind of sort of commitment I have.
How's the team doing?
Um, we're doing pretty good. I think we're eight and two.
What team are you on?
Uh, Essex, oh, JVA.
JVA, good for you. Who's, this is off the, off, off, off track. Who's the coach this year for that?
Uh, Ingrid.
Ingrid is great. Good for you.
Yeah, she's awesome.
Good. Well, I don't think any of us have any other questions. Good luck with the season. Probably come out and see you all play the next couple of home games, I'm sure. And thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, totally.
I think someone will be in touch shortly this week at some point.
Okay.
Alright, thanks.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
Thanks, Piper.
Thanks, you too.
Alright, five B, discussion and consideration of land development code amendments, introduction and warning of a public hearing. Come on up.
So I have two members of the planning commission here today as well, as they were like an integral part of developing the land development code amendments that are proposed. So I think they're, they're available to answer any questions about how, how the, the commission landed where they did.
Great. Do we just want to do any introductions quickly?
Yes.
Just to refresh. We can start or you can start? It's up to you.
Hi, I'm Elena.
We have signs, sorry.
Elena Yodichus?
Yes.
Elijah Massey.
Great, thanks for coming.
Thanks for being here.
I think we know Chris. I'm Raj Chala. Again, we have signs, so we're cheating a little bit. Thanks for joining us tonight and thanks for all the work on this. How do we want to start this?
So you folks have had this material in your packet a couple of times now, and there's a lot in there, long, long presentation. The planning commission's written report, which does a great job summarizing the edits and then the full track changes as well. So the intention for tonight is not necessarily to go into a presentation and, and talk at length about what's in there, but these folks are here to help answer any questions that you might have on the rest of it. And we can go from there. The, ultimately, the, the hope is that the council will get to a place where they feel comfortable warning a public hearing for this work. We'll set that date, have a public hearing, and then if anything changes substantially after that point, then you've got to have a, have a second public hearing on it. But you could also make any changes now before you move it towards public hearing.
Great, thank you. I think I'm going to say this at the beginning. There was one piece of this, one very small piece of this that I think we will want to hold. And that's the portion of seven fourteen that refers to the sandwich board signs. So we've asked staff to change that language so that we can pull that out, pull changes for that out, because we want to discuss that more with you all when we get together in February and potentially with some business owners and others around that. So when we do warn the public hearing, we'll probably change it to this version, which I believe updates the sections, makes everything refer correctly, but essentially keeps things the way they are today the same. So I'll just get that out of the way and say that, that's one thing we'll probably hold on for tonight. And again, I think we're hoping that following the TOD discussion on the six, that we can check in on this as well. Great. Does anyone want to start? Amber, I'm going to guess you have something. There you go. Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, I do. I was just trying to organize my thoughts here. Um, I guess I'll start with the easy one. I'm wondering, um, maybe if the folks could speak to the addition for seven fourteen L six, which is on the marquee signs? And what the conversation was related to that, if there was any?
So, uh, I guess specifically, um, thank you. I personally don't remember a specific discussion on the marquee. Chris may, or Elena may have specific knowledge there. I will kind of just remind the council that much of the language of what we're proposing is based off of similar documentation that the city of Burlington and other municipalities, but primarily the city of Burlington are using. So, um, just in terms of like for context, uh, we didn't bring this thing whole cloth out of our minds. It's largely based on pre-existing.
I appreciate that, Elijah. I, I did bring that and, and the pictures, the pictures definitely help when you see the pictures of the Flynn describing what the marquee sign is, so.
Also mention, when I was developing the first draft of this, the, the types of signs and where they are proposed to be allowed is based on what the la, what kind of land uses are currently allowed in each of these zoning districts. So even though perhaps we, the Essex Junction doesn't have a theater that, you know, where somebody would want to put up a marquee sign, there is, it, it is possible that in the future that there, even like with existing zoning, that's a that such theater could be established and this kind of future proves the, the potential for such businesses.
Can I ask a follow-up to that, Amber, before you keep going?
Go ahead.
Is that?
I'm having a hard time hearing you again.
I moved back there. It was my fault. I'm sorry. Would that sign type be able to be used by a non-theater? Is there anything in here that would? Or would it be able to be used by any, any kind of business in the districts that's allowed?
It would be able to be used by any types of businesses that meet the dimensional requirements. I mean, obviously you need to be large enough to, to have that.
Sure, yep.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I have, Amber, for that. Keep going.
And also I would, I would mention that this is subject to design review by the Development Review Board. Within the design review overlay district.
Great point. Randy, Amber, did you have more?
I don't have anything more on the marquee unless anybody else had any questions on that.
It doesn't look like it in the room.
Okay. I was trying to find the string light section. I don't know why I can't find that.
Which?
Which?
String lights, talking about string lights.
So that was moved out, out of the sign section because the, there are often, yeah, it's, it's now in the lighting section.
Okay.
So let me, I can tell you what, seven oh four B at the bottom of it.
So I guess the first question that I had about string lighting, as soon as I find it, but I can talk at the same time, I think. Really what we're talking about, when, when I think of the string lights, I think of Christmas lights. Is that essentially what we're talking about?
This for the most, I, I think string lights can be used in various ways. But this, this, I, I think when the planning commission had a discussion about string lights, it was actually about restaurants and outdoor patios using it to create a pleasant atmosphere around the seats. But perhaps you can.
Yeah, there, there was, uh, it, over a year ago now, an extended discussion around the string lighting element. And as Chris suggests, while Christmas lights would fall under it, the primary focus of the conversation was around probably basically white lights being used to illuminate outdoor space that people are in, whether it be for a restaurant or for, yeah, a patio or some other type of outdoor after sundown activity.
Gotcha.
And this, this doesn't prohibit, Krista, the so the way it's written, so if a, if a homeowner wants to use string lights, that's, that's not governed by this section? Or is it? Does that make sense? Does my question make sense?
Yes, but it, it says at the bottom of here, if it is used in connection with a commercial premises, that, that is, they have to be switched off outside of business hours. Otherwise, like if it's, if it's being used in your backyard, this would say you should turn them off after 10:00 PM. I, I, I do, I do remember the planning commission having some discussion about whether or not 10:00 PM was justified. If it should be later or earlier, if someone, if their neighbors would find it, potentially find it annoying, because it's not, you know, it's not dark, dark sky, they're not necessarily dark sky compliant and usually they're not and they could be you know, in, in, in somebody else's face. At 10:00 PM was the, was, was what the planning commission thought was a reasonable compromise.
And then I was, I was interested in the conversations that might have happened at the PC level regarding the electronic message board signs. I know that in my previous history on the planning commission, uh, there was a lot of discussion about those particular signs and that's why it wasn't in there. Um, so I'm just kind of curious as to what the discussion might have been. If there is none, then you can feel free to say there was none. It's fine.
No, I think the, what, there was discussion on the subject. I think the, and again, I'm not looking at it, so I can't recall. I don't have a photographic memory. But I believe that the, the attempt was to basically, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but to regulate it based on sizing.
Well, actually, there, there was something in about electronic message board signs for municipal properties. Um, I, I believe the last version had that as well and this kind of restores that. There was some, uh, EGRP had, had, uh, earlier thought about some putting up a sign of that nature. And this basically keeps that in there.
Keeps that ability in there?
That ability in there, yeah.
And limited to municipal departments, not? I think that's what it, yeah, one or two sided for municipal apartments, which are used.
But not, not for businesses?
That's how I read it. Unless there's a different section. It's hard to read all of these different sections in conjunction sometimes. So I might have missed it.
Yeah, I, I do not recall making any changes to the electronic message, like regulations on electronic message boards. So yeah, basically what, whatever's there right now.
I'm gonna, I guess I'll ask one more question. I don't want to dominate this entire conversation, so I'm sure Marcus has questions. Marcus has no questions? Oh my God. I'm calling, I'm calling it a night. Same, same type of, about the projecting sign in seven fourteen L nine. So same type of, you know, what, what was the discussion or is this just another, basically took the Burlington and plugged it in?
So there's a kind of a technical, a, a change in, in nomenclature here. Projecting signs in this new, in, in the new set of regulations. We have, right now, there is something called projecting signs in the LDC, except they're, they're referred to as blade signs. They're just smaller projecting signs. Yeah, this is a, this is kind of a new addition based on, you know, based on where the, the set of amendments, the first version of it came from. But the, if I remember correctly, the consideration was about how now there are you know, there, there are more multi-story buildings in the more urban parts of, of the city and this, you know, this may be a useful option to have.
We don't have any currently. We don't have any blade signs because that's the term now.
Blade signs, we don't have projecting signs. Projecting signs are kind of the large vertical versions of the blade signs.
If you're interested in the, the, the implementation of marquee signs, it would make sense that you're also interested in the potential implementation.
They do kind of go together, don't they? Sometimes I make sense, occasionally.
They're the ones that are, like the old nectar, maybe it's the current nectar sign. Okay, yeah, got you. Alright.
Yep. Okay, I am going to be done for now. Thanks, guys.
And I'll mention actually the, uh, projecting signs, it says specifically, all projecting signs require design review by the Development Review Board. Even if it's outside of the develop, uh, the, the design review overlay district.
Thanks.
Marcus, sorry.
Alright, um, so to follow up on, on what Amber was talking about there concerning the lights, because same thing, trying to follow along and try to put this all together in a way that, like, how does this apply to businesses and then how, what if any applies to residences, I found a little confusing. But speaking of lighting in general, when we're talking about lighting, I see a couple of different a couple of different reference points in the way that we're, it, it sounds like we're looking at lighting from a measurable standpoint. And I'm trying to understand what is the metric, what is the scale to which we use in order to judge whether or not lighting is intrusive or not upon a residence or a business or whatever it may be in order to determine that this is too much or not enough, because you know, like when you talk about marquee, I can imagine, you know, living next to the Flynn, you know, like the Flynn were all of a sudden built up next to my house, I'd, I'd probably be a little upset. But at the same time, if you're talking about the illuminated sign, for instance, that you just referred to, which I have seen in various types of installations, it can be, it can mean nothing because of the fact that it's a small, you know, projected image on the sidewalk, you know? But at the same time, it could be, what if it's art that's projected up on the wall? Like, I know. Like, I know going into other municipalities, other cities where we see sometimes projected imagery on buildings, sometimes it's for advertisement, sometimes it's for art, and I'm trying to understand how we're measuring that or looking at that in order to determine whether or not it's a nuisance versus, you know, what is a problem, what is not a problem, and how do we measure it?
So before, Chris, I'm sure has a more technical answer. The metric that the planning commission has been using has basically been each of our lived experiences and our individual opinions. We don't have any kind of like wattage, like this is intrusive, this isn't intrusive. You know, using this much electricity for the sign and therefore it's classified as a nuisance or not. It's been primarily based on the individual planning commission members' opinions and observations living in the junction that has informed this metric, and so unless Chris is going to pull something out that I'm overlooking, we don't have a defined metric that we were holding up to each of these in order to make the determinations that we're recommending in these updates. Chris?
If I remember correctly, there is somewhere deep in the LDC a metric for limiting internally illuminated signs and how much, how bright they could be. I can tell you we've never, in recent history, we have never had to go out and issue a violation for that. I think all, we don't go out measuring unless there are complaints or unless we notice something that looks very much out of the ordinary. So in terms of the specific regulations on signs, I believe there is a number somewhere in there that can be measured with a tool that the city engineer can, could go out and help with. Many larger establishments would have to go through a site plan application to make any changes anyway. And as a part of that, particularly for commercial uses and larger multifamily uses, there is a lighting plan component to that, where if you follow the development review board document, documents that are posted, you'll see basically a site plan with a bunch of numbers dotted throughout that site saying how bright each point on that map is expected to be with all the lights turned on. And there's a certain calculation with that and how intense each hotspot can be and how much coverage the darker spots must have in order to reach that. And I think anything that, the lighting that comes from signs would show up on such a lighting plan. If it was.
Okay, so the way that, yeah, thank you, because I think the way that I've, because I've seen that before in presentations, and I totally understand, you know, whether you're looking at a street lamp or you're looking at lighting a walkway going up to a store, you know, or a new building that's going up, you want to make sure those walkways are well lit and things of that nature. I've seen that on the plans, but I don't remember seeing what that measurement may look like to understand what that impact is on the surrounding environment. I do, there was a reference in the LDC to the number of knits. I'm bringing this up because I'm not a lighting person, I'm a sound guy. But I also know that it's probably as difficult to measure as it is sound. Because depending on where I put that lamp and I'm projecting it, it could be a bother to someone and it could not bother another. So I guess the difficulty that I'm having here is there's a certain subjectiveness that's still in here that is not giving me confidence in the fact that, not that it can be black and white, because I think the sound issue is a clear example of like where it can be ambiguous. I think that, and that may be the case here, but I just want to make sure that we are clear so that if someone does make a complaint. But we also know that things then also get built, and then once it's in function, it could be different than what you see in the plans or how it may have felt in the plans. So I just want to make sure that that's, and it's going to be clear about how we might measure it or how we might evaluate it in order to determine whether or not there is a true violation here so that we can acknowledge it, and then at the same time, how do we work with that party in order to improve the situation? So that's what I'm thinking about, that's what I'm a little concerned about in the way that I read that portion. So, yeah, any additional enlightenment around, any enlightenment, any additional enlightenment around that area would be great, if at all possible.
Marcus, can I just clarify, are you specifically talking about the edits in here associated with signs? Or are you really asking more broadly about lighting, which either has changed in here or not changed from what we've had today?
I think both, yeah, definitely both. One led into the other for me in the read. So that's why I'm kind of asking the question to understand, because again, even from a signage standpoint, I think that, you know, like when you talk about projected signs, I get a little concerned about it because there are certain projected signs that I wouldn't think would be an issue. But based on the rules, they seem to be a problem. So, you know, it's like if I'm projecting it onto the sidewalk with an image versus am I projecting it on a wall? Might be different. So, and those two use cases are, you know, are pretty commonplace for a projector-like sign. And as I said, I mean, I've seen art installations that are done that way, and I don't know what the impact of these things would be on those kinds of activities in our community. If it expands beyond the business or not.
So, and I just want to be clear, a projecting sign, as defined in the LDC, is not projecting any image onto something else?
No, a projecting sign is a sign that sticks out in the wall.
So rather than being against the wall, it sticks out.
Okay.
Think the nectar sign that is on a swivel above the nectar's front window.
All right. Okay. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, and I did bring this up once before, and I did want to bring this up only because of the fact that, again, I had communication with a community, with a resident who asked about this. We have talked about this a little bit before in regards to the statutes around housing and housing density. You know, again, as we look at our community, and yes, the state statutes are being modified, we're adjusting the LDC. It looks like we're adjusting the LDC to meet that state statute standard. That being said, though, the question that was brought up was, again, does there come a limitation? Or then opportunity for limitation because if you look at our community, and not that I suspect that this would ever happen, you know, we're not going to end up with quad, you know, fourplexes on every property. But, you know, if we were to maximize the state statute in our community, does there come a point where we've gone too far? I mean, is there a place here where we can, we can determine whether or not that density has reached a true maximum versus just allowing every property to meet the state statute? Hopefully that's clear.
I think this is something that we, you know, we had some conversations, we had members of the public come in as well and talk about this because there's now four units allowed on all the single-family zoned and duplex zone parcels. But our lot coverage setback regulations, all those other requirements still apply, height limits. So parking regulate requirements, so all of those things make it harder, which again, for the intent of increasing housing density could provide some challenges that we were trying to work around while still preserving the sort of character. So I don't think, depending on lot sizes, that all of this would be particularly feasible everywhere anyway. For better or worse.
Far fewer than I think we imagined will be eligible for this based on size, but, and they now have either multiple units or multiple buildings on them. Will they be required to have that kind of lighting between them, or are they, is there a different regulation? Does that make sense? Do they have to light the way that, I can't even remember the name of the street off Maple. Robbins, can't believe I can't remember that. Robbins Way would have. Or is that just a different animal because that's a different kind of development?
So there's a lot of history with how that development was approved, which predate my time here. But that did go through, that was subject to a lighting plan, and there were questions about whether the lighting that was put in actually matched what the lighting plan said.
All right, well, let's forget that as an example. Let's just say that I put an ADU in the back, and now there's a pathway going from my slightly enlarged driveway around my house, very close to my neighbor's house now, that goes to the backyard to the new ADU. Would that pathway need to be lit 24 hours? Would it need to be lit partially, or is it okay to not?
It would not need to be, even right now, it would not need to be with an ADU. Because right now, that's not subject to a full site plan review, that where a lighting plan is required. The proposal, one of the proposed changes is that anything up to fourplex can be treated like how a duplex currently is treated, which would omit the requirement for a lighting plan. However, strict requirements on the type of lights that anybody can install are still in place. It has to be dark sky compliant, which actually the ones on Robbins Way, I think, are not dark sky compliant, and that's part of how, you know, they ended up with the issue.
Yeah, that's probably not a great example, but, okay. And I guess the only other question, I appreciate the designation for permanent food trucks to have hookups for electric so they're not running diesel and gas generators. I'm concerned about, or curious about, the 30-day temporary ones, placement, hours of operation, diesel generators, gas generators running. Are there, it don't seem to be, so I'm curious if there was any discussion around business hours proximity to, let's, well, a good example of my neighborhood, I guess, we have a business on the corner of Willy's and Pearl. If they put a food truck in the back and run a generator off it, is there a time they'd have to stop? There are four homes within 50 feet of that that would be impacted by that. So I'm not saying that having them there is a bad idea, I'm just wondering if there are any ways to put some guardrails on the impact of that, in terms of hours, in terms of, if they were there for 30 days or at least 30 days worth of weekend, two or three nights a weekend kind of thing, for instance, that could, that could become a bit of a nuisance for that area. So, yeah, don't know if that was considered, or if, I think that's a great addition, I love the, like, I would love to see us take a couple of sections and actually put facilities in for food trucks so they could just show up regularly. But like this temporary use randomly around town is what I'm curious about.
Yeah, so just for context, when the planning commission was working on the food truck section of the update, we initially were not considering new food trucks, we were trying to kind of work with the food trucks that we currently have. And so we were not considering potentially new locations for the temporary ones. We were looking to, how can we, how can we continue to work with these existing businesses? And there were several iterations of the conversation around, and that's how the section that we now have about, if you're going to be a temporary food truck, we don't want to have you running a generator and other related concerns. I don't know, and Chris, again, has a more encyclopedic memory of the subject than I do. I don't know that we built in any of the types of considerations that you just raised, Raj, in terms of food truck popping up in the neighborhood and running, let's say, up until 10 o'clock when they're supposed to turn the lights off. That would be something in terms of the council's interest in adding or amending.
Yeah, so you said, yeah, so you said, that's great, I mean, you said until 10 o'clock when they're supposed to turn the lights off, is that, is that a thing?
Is there something that would currently?
Like 10 o'clock, they're supposed to turn the lights out, or is that?
That is, that is not a thing. I think that is only a thing with string lights.
Yeah.
So if they have string lights in their parking lot, they're issued.
So it's not powered by a generator?
Well, is it, then let me just ask a naive question, because as a new member of the council here, these trucks would need a permit to operate? Or do they just show up? Can they, does, like, if, for example, what used to be Street Dogs on Park Street, they have to get a permit to operate their food truck, so can we just set forth conditions?
This is where we do that.
Yeah, right, so we're defining the conditions for that permit, so if we have temporary use of a generator, then we have to define that, right?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking about, basically, is, is there anything in here I didn't see it? And was there discussion about it, and then I'd be curious, you know, if other communities did, done that. And the reason I ask this for Essex Junction is it's very dense. Like, there are very, and I keep bringing this up with various LDC conversations, there really are weird no buffer areas, like we either go from full commercial to full residential within feet, sometimes just a train track width. So thinking Pearl Street, Big Lot, you know, everywhere basically, except for the HOA neighborhoods up on the hill or down below by Cascade could be impacted by this. And so it's not a huge deal until we hear it's a deal, where.
So I can tell you, the starting place for the first draft of this came from trying to be conservative relative to the existing regulations. And there wasn't an attempt to drastically change regulations for businesses that already exist. And this was trying to fix what was originally intended to be temporary, but with COVID continued to be an ongoing thing. So one of the considerations when I first drafted this was that there are, like, within the CVE, for example, during the fair, a lot of those food trucks do run off of generators, and there are special events where that happens. And at the same time, I noticed last summer, there was one food truck in particular, in particular on near Pearl Street that was just running a generator the whole time, we received a complaint. Technically, that's regulated under noise, but it's rather difficult to go after somebody for noise and much easier to just write, write in requirements like this. So the requirement for that to be allowed only for a short, relatively short temporary use permit was a compromise to start, but I don't recall there being very long discussion about further regulating or shortening the period for which you could run a generator.
Can I add a question? Are food trucks permitted in only certain zoning districts?
Yes.
Okay, so they're not, this is not something that would pop up in any residential zoning district around the city?
Food trucks, as proposed, would only be, actually, even right now, are only allowed as temporary use where eating and drinking establishments are already allowed. where eating and drinking establishments are already allowed.
Yeah, I think the fair, you know, we waive those events generally for noise. So the expectation is that they're going to exceed everything for a period. And, you know, the Pearl Street corridor, the Village Core, Park Street, again, all of those places tend to not have much of a buffer. So I guess I'm sort of not settled on not having a, at least a time. I mean, we have time for lighting. We have a noise ordinance. I think, like you said, it'd be easier than enforcing, trying to enforce a noise ordinance to just say, fine, here's your temporary use permit under the condition that you stop, the generator has to stop by this time.
Do you have any ideas to what would be a reasonable time?
I think most restaurant kitchens close at 9:30 or 10:00. I mean, if that's what our noise ordinance is. I mean, at least that's just something to think about. I don't, Marcus, you got your hand up? Or is this on this topic or is it something different?
No, no, you, you can continue. Yeah.
I guess I, yeah, I'm just curious what others think if this is, it doesn't feel like a huge deal, but it's not until two or three show up and then we get a few phone calls because it's night two or three of a.
Hot dog week.
Or something, you know, we're just, it's just a weekend in the summer. It's a weekend in the summer that's awesome because there's three foot, there's three food trucks in front of Big Lots and everybody can walk over and get whatever they want or downtown. But there's also 42 bedrooms around them because there's all the apartment buildings and houses a block away and they're kind of annoyed.
I don't, I wouldn't object to saying 10 o'clock is a cutoff. I don't think that that.
What's, is that what our noise is, our sound ordinance?
I think, and, yeah. In our, in our history, in our recent history of food trucks, they're usually shut down well before that. And I don't think, you know, like you want to be definitely cognizant and aware of all of those residential units, especially along Pearl Street. And I'm thinking to the food truck in front of Essex Automotive that has permanent power. So I mean, there's.
Yeah, there was the one that was the barbecue place and I heard from people who lived in the apartment building behind it that the smoke was a major annoyance.
Yeah.
And they just felt like they were powerless to do anything from that. So, I mean, that's the proximity we're dealing with. Like there, even when, where there are restaurants, there are also residences. So it's, they're really not separate. Like when we, over at Essex Agency, there's going to be a giant apartment building going, not giant, there's going to be an apartment building going back and there are apartments in all of those buildings.
Right.
And there's a restaurant there and room for three or four food trucks. You could fill up Railroad Street and close it periodically, which I love to do. But like, I'd like to be able to assure the residents that, you know, there's some gargles on it. And if it's overkill, it's overkill, but.
I'm sorry, Rob, can I ask you guys to get closer to the microphone?
Does that include me?
Yes, please, that. I was joking earlier, yes, thank you.
Why don't we think about that for a bit? And I guess I would propose to save, to have it match the noise ordinance for now. And we can move on. So Marcus, you had your hand up?
But, I mean, Elena, did you have a question? I don't want to.
No.
Okay.
Sorry, but you were far away from the mic.
I do not have any questions.
All right, I want to make, I just wanted to make sure everybody else had a chance. But I appreciate Raj bringing this up. It did make me think for a second on going back to the lighting thing just for, for a moment. The impact on some businesses right in our own downtown area. Because with the new addition on the string lights with the timing, I, I wonder what you thought around the impact on businesses. Because as I recall, McGillicuddy's uses them, Firebird uses them. Now those two, based on their operating hours, probably not, not a big deal to against that. But On Tap, as I recall, uses that. And the business at 34 Park Street is. So I just didn't know you had, may have considered about the impact on existing businesses that may be using this kind of lighting as a tool for their outdoor space.
Yes, those, several of those sites were part of the string light discussion. And if memory serves, the direction of that discussion actually kind of lines up with concerns that Raj just brought up around the food trucks in terms of, given the density and let's say people living in apartments in proximity to ground floor businesses, that, that is part of what informed the current string light recommendation that's in the amendments. So recognizing that there are businesses that are using string lights as part of their ambiance and atmosphere and trying to balance that with residents who may be trying to go to sleep before the business is necessarily completely shut down for the night.
But for businesses like On Tap that have much later hours typically and have been, and are allowed to have later hours, I could imagine that for a space like theirs, going into a parking lot like theirs, it's not only decorative, but it's functional and safety. So I'm thinking about it, thinking about that very specific case. I start to wonder if we're, if we're, if there isn't some other, if, I don't want to use the word waiver, but I mean, if, if there's some compromise here so that a business like theirs can continue to operate in a safe and responsible way by, you know, by using, you know, nobody is saying all of a sudden put up floodlights everywhere. But how can we do it so that we can maintain a safe environment? I think we have to have a balance between having that safe environment and the discomfort of someone has to live in a, you know, the urban part of our.
Your point is well taken, but to the, just along that concern about safety, there are multiple lighting options specifically for making safe walkways and safe pedestrian transportation corridors that do not include string lighting. It, it may be splitting hairs. But there are, I mean, we do have a whole lighting section in the LDC. String lights is just part of that. And I appreciate your point that there are, string lighting is a lighting option that many commercial businesses opt into using. So I guess just, I, I don't know that it's quite, and not suggesting that you're framing it as one or the other, safety or string lights. But there are certainly other lighting options that a commercial business could use in conjunction with string lighting if they needed to turn the string lighting off at a certain time in order to ensure safe pedestrian movement.
I guess along those lines, then it comes back to a conversation that, that we'll have on another topic on another day, which is I, I get, I understand there are other, there are other options, but we make this change, this rule. This business will be impacted by this rule. This potentially then could become a complaint to which we then enforce, then they have to incur. And, and, and I believe the way that I have observed community development, the analysts before, you know, we would, we would seek to fix the problem, not just, you know, incurring fines on, on these people. But I'm not sure that it's perfectly clear that, how does that happen? Because that's, that is incurred, that means that that business will be incurring costs on something they have been allowed to do for some time now. And I guess what I don't know from how we enforce is what the clarity is about how we help them resolve these things in a way that fits how we want the community to look and feel. You know, if we want them to make this change and are going to insist that they make this change by changing rules, then how are we going to make sure that we work with them to try to make this happen without it feeling like we're just trying to change rules on people so that they, you know, walk in step with us? You know what I'm saying? So.
I think I'd add to this, Marcus. I, I understand exactly what you're talking about and we've had this conversations around other aspects of changes that are proposed here. I think we're making a lot of assumptions on one business in this regard. You know, the fact that they don't have other lighting outside, the fact that they may have to stop entertaining out there at, at 10 o'clock regardless, for instance. The fact that they're probably not doing it a good portion of the year because it's too cold. And, you know, there's a lot around this in terms of, you know, we're, we're adding dozens and dozens and dozens of apartments that weren't there as this business has been using that deck, one business. And this is what you're saying, and I think we should reach out to them and ask them to come to the public hearing and answer for them, you know, like how will this impact you or not? And then, you know, weigh that against what 50 or 60 people who will be living around it might be experiencing. But it's a, it's a good point. I think all of these are going to have an impact on someone, one way or another, or a business. But I think, you know, as, as I am in the other topic you're referring to, I'm open to, as, as one counselor, I'm, I'm open to talking to them about how this might impact them and what can be done.
So I, I have just a little bit of background as to how this came about as well that might be relevant. String lights are not actually allowed right now in the, under the LDC because they're not dark sky compliant. This was the addition of this, like point 10 over here is actually trying to codify something that, that we know exists and people are used to and works. It looks nice and I think it's like generally accepted if it's, if it's not too annoying to, to neighbors. I, there is a little part of this that, that, that's, that's kind of arbitrary. 10 PM to 6 AM. It, it is a compromise and it's not necessarily the, the, the perfect answer. And perhaps the perfect answer, perhaps the answer is to have some kind of a waiver available if there are no impacts to adjacent neighbors, if it's shielded from view from adjacent properties. That, that is possible. There, this, this wasn't written to be a major change relative to the existing regulations. And, and to reiterate, currently they're not allowed and this allows it.
I definitely appreciate the dark sky attempt where possible. I think even when we talk about the Village Core and we, we accept that it's more of a, I mean, we're, we're a city, we're called a city because the state forced us to call ourselves a city because a village leaving into town can't be anything but a city. That said, it's way more urban than other parts of the community. It's becoming more so. I still think efforts like this to reduce that impact in terms of in areas we can like lighting is worthwhile. But we definitely should have the men and others to kind of weigh that. Marcus, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the screen. You can't see me looking at you, but I'm looking at, at you when I say that, Marcus. Is there anything else? Elaine, anything, Tim, nothing comes to mind? All right. Is there anything that you two want to, as a result of all this, want to kind of bring up? Or is anything that's been on your mind since this year's worth of work? You don't have to have anything. I just wanted to, you know, offer that opportunity of.
I think for me, as came up, has come up in discussion, and I'm sure you as a council talk about it a lot and will continue to, I think the, the effects of the Home Act on communities across the state and how communities are both taking it as an opportunity, but also understandably feeling like maybe they're having density forced on them in certain contexts is, is a very real and valid concern that I can imagine our community as well as every other one in the state is going to be kind of chewing through for the appreciable future. I think as when I'm brought up, there are, it is understandable that in people's minds, the first place they go is that we're going to have, you know, fourplexes mushrooming up everywhere. When the reality of other limiting factors in our community that we as a community do have control over, adjusting should we care to, is an important distinction. As well as honestly, at least for the near term, just the cost of people, of construction. The, the housing crisis that we're facing as a nation and as a state is going to make this a slower impact than maybe how it looks when we look at the Home Act. But I think it is a very interesting challenge to be working through as a planning commission. I'm sure as a city council and as a broader community, as a piece of trying to, to work on the housing shortage that everyone's experienced.
And I, I know I've talked to more than a few counselors over the last, we've had this for two months. I feel like, and it's been a struggle to get through. So I really, not that it wasn't interesting, it's just been, it's a lot. And it's definitely clear how much work went into this, even if it was, there were technical, quote unquote, technical adjustments and not complete, also rewrite. So very much appreciate it. And look forward to talking to you all on the sixth about all kinds of other big projects coming up.
This is some really painstaking work and I really want to thank you and the whole commission and you, Chris, also for how much work you've done on this.
The commission has been working hard, but the, the bulk of that accolade should rest on Chris's shoulders.
For sure.
Thanks very much.
All right, so we have, sorry, yes.
Steve.
Yeah. Did you have anything that you wanted to add to this, Regina?
I'm trying to decide whether it's helpful to say this or not. I'll just add that zoning is an imperfect science. So to the point of around the, the string lights and the timing of that and all the other kind of components of how we manage this continued increased densification and potential nuisance impacts that happen from one use to the next. You know, we, I think we definitely want to keep at front of mind whether we can enforce something that we're putting into the regulations. But I just want to caution that if you looked at the zoning regulations in full, a lot of it is not enforceable, really. There's, and there's a lot that probably if we went to every single house in every residential neighborhood in the city to see if they're dark, dark sky compliant or even just down shielded their very front porch light, probably not. And that's not necessarily a good use of anybody's time to go around and figure that out, whether I'm right on that or wrong. But, so just wanted to say that I think this is, really appreciate what Chris and the planning commission has brought forward because I think this is a really great piece of work to try to address a lot of these things that we're trying to figure out and balance these different requirements. And so, yeah.
Yep, that's great. And we didn't even touch on 98% or 99% of what went in this. And not just because we don't understand it. Steve Eustace, looks like you have your hand up online.
I do. Thank you, Raj. So thank you to the planning commission and everybody for all the work. I agree, I read through the packet, that was great. I unfortunately missed the hearing at the planning commission time and I wanted to bring. And I wanted to bring something up that I brought up at a development review board meeting. And this has to do with, you know, development, like say along Park Street or any of the other, you know, core areas or the more urban areas as we've been talking. You know, at first at McGillicuddy's. When they put that in or that building, I should say, you know, there's like a step such the sidewalk end up, ends up getting divided. And, and it was a small step, not a big deal. But then when they did the building where the boxcar bakery is next door, the step is significant. You know, several steps higher. And when the next building, so I was a little surprised, but you know, you don't see it till it's getting built. And so then when they were at the development review board, again, everything was kind of designed and I brought up, they're going to do that again. And I brought it up and the developer said, oh, well. He had a lot of good reasons for why he needed that. But I find it isn't very inclusive. And, you know, when you're coming down the sidewalk, there's a bench up high, you know, especially, you know. You're walking with your grandmother or something, is she really going to want to go all the way up there to sit down on the bench? And, you know, we look at like the part over by like where Martone's is. Like, like the sidewalk, the whole sidewalk's at the same level. And, you know, most, you know, places are like that. You know, even Church Street, you know, Burlington, like most places that are all, you know, the developer blamed it on the hill on Park Street. Between the railroad and five corners is why they had to do it. And it's like a ever so slight downhill, but like Church Street's quite a big hill and, and they don't have this in Burlington. And I didn't know if there was something, it seems to me like it would be awesome if we could get something in the. Land Development Code to encourage in the downtown areas like these buildings where we want to have. Like a setback, so there's like a little bit of public space and it's not just like five foot wide or six foot wide sidewalk, and then you got a wall to, to a. Elevated area to just have it more welcoming, you know, we're going to walk up and more tend to go look in the window, oh, what's that business doing? You know, things like that. I just think it would be much more welcoming. I don't know the language for this. And I apologize for, you know, asking when it's in front of the city council and not six months ago. But I think it would be helpful to, as we develop out the whole village center area to have. Something, I don't know what anybody thinks about it, but I wanted to bring.
Thanks, Steve. Sir, any discussion around that? I'm kind of doubting it.
So this came up when, during a DRV hearing about 17 Park Street. I, in the staff report, I wrote about the, about this specific issue. And there was, and some interpretation about to put pedestrian connectivity to, to the streets. It, it looks like as, as written, there, there's no explicit. Requirements that the, the ground level storefronts are at. At the same level as a sidewalk. And that is certainly a possibility, and that is actually something I have asked the, the transit oriented development. Master plan consultants to, to look at. I do not have a proposal at this point. For how that could be integrated with this batch of LDC amendments.
So I guess that makes me wonder, we're going to hear about the, that project on the sixth. How does that get folded into this? What's that process or timeline look like?
It's going to be with really, really the next, the, the next batch of land development code amendments and there's, it's. There are options as to how that's done, whether or not you, you would wait until the comprehensive plan is also updated. That first and then, and then the, the, the LDC amendments that comes from that plus, you know, everything that's kind of queued up. Or something in the interim. And then. And then comprehensive plan amendments and then whatever comes out of the comprehensive plan amendments. I, I would say like, the LDC is always going to have to change.
Well, that I get, that, that's clear.
Yeah, so. How, how soon the next batch comes, I think that's up for discussion.
Yeah, because in the former, in your first example, that's a couple of years out. And that example makes me wonder about. What might be proposed, go through the system, at least get design review and approved. For the remaining lots in that area where this would be an impact. Prior to changes being made that would mitigate it. Which feels right now, I have no idea, but feels more likely than not. Based on. But I, you never know with, with, with all this, so I just wanted to. We're not going to talk about that now, I would imagine, but. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think we'll have a better handle once. We have a good sense of what's coming out of that project, what are the recommendations and what is a feasible timeframe depending on the type of recommendation and how complex it is to get it into the system or more importantly, how. How controversial, for lack of a better term, how controversial a recommendation might be, like building heights, perhaps.
Yep, okay. Thank you, Steve, thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up, just to say, I mean, to not over complicate things. Could it be something as simple as saying that the store entry levels need to be at sidewalk level? I mean, we. Because I agree, sometimes if you try and combine a lot of things together, it takes a long time, so. Just suggesting for, keep it simple. And don't try to tack so much on, and then maybe it can be included in this batch before a bunch more buildings are proposed. Anyway, that's my last thought, thank you.
Thanks. I mean, I guess I'd be curious about that, but I'm skeptical.
I agree, it's, it's important. I wish we can get there. I don't think it's as simple as just stay, saying that. And expecting people to just automatically achieve it. When they need to do underground parking.
Yeah, there, there is, it does potentially complicate the, the floor plates. And if this is not. If this is a blanket rule, it could make for buildings that have. Very complicated floor plate with lots of steps and ramps inside that, that reduces the usable area.
Yeah, because it feels like with the, with the building we're talking about, the very newest one and the one next to it. Getting parking under there, it's not fully buried because the ground floor is a few feet above. Grade essentially, at least in the front and not in the back, so we don't have to get into this. There isn't anything else? We have a motion on page 12 of the packet, but I'm trying to remember how we were going to handle.
Sorry, Raj, I was just going to mention as well that. Staff and also Amber has brought up some, some grammatical and, and minor. Errors that don't affect the meaning of a. Of the LDC amendments and. I, I think this would be a good opportunity to include in your motion, basically permission to, to. Correct those before this, it goes out to the public. And I'll also, I guess, need some direction on whether, whether or not there should be time limits on food truck generators. String lighting and storefronts at sidewalk level.
Let's take those in order, do we want, Amber, have your hand up.
I was just questioning whether this was the time in which I would ask to eliminate the projecting sign and the marquee sign section.
It is a possible time. For sure.
I'm interested in other folks' thoughts about removing those as part of this motion.
Amber, could you just go into why?
I just, to be honest, I, I just cannot see. I just can't see it for, for this small, small city to see those types of signs in this community. And I'm not saying, I, I recognize that there is. A DRB approval of those signs that's going to look at, at, at all that, but that's still. Still allows them in the, in the districts. So my preference would be not to allow, I, I'm, I can get on board with the blade signs, those are, you know, that's the nomad sign, it's a fairly small sign projecting from the, from the side of the. The building, but when I think about the sign that's used for like the projecting sign, like the Wilson, which I. Is, was, I looked at that every day for 10 years, frankly. That sign is just something I don't want to see, I want to see clean cut street lines without signs hanging, hanging out. It's just a personal preference, I guess.
Anyone else?
The only other signage thing that I would like clarity on for the, is because of the upcoming. Election, I would like to have some clarity around. The political signs so that we have clarity, clear messaging going out. About it. So that people, because obviously campaigns, if they haven't started, they're going to start very soon, and I would like them to have clarity around that as. Soon as possible so that we can make sure that we clear up any confusion so we don't have kind of what happened at the last round.
Alright, I hear that. Let's go back to the proposal to get rid of the marquee and the. Amber, you said projection sign, projected signs? Do we do a motion for that? Do we, I don't think so, do we just take a informal poll?
I think you could just take an informal poll, and if, and if folks are in favor, then it'd be included in the amendment. If not. I'm happy to be in the minority.
Questions or comments on the topic?
Well, can I just ask what Chris's thoughts are or the planning commission's thoughts are in? The impact of removing those two things from the plan, from the code?
So the, the immediate impacts are none because there's no such. I, there, there are no such signs right now, and I, I don't see any businesses that would want that type of sign. With the transit oriented developments master plan. Projects and what it envisions for how the, the kind of two shopping centers can maybe be developed, I, I don't know what the future will look like and. Whether or not there, there might potentially be some larger kind of. I guess entertainment venues that might find them useful. And I guess it's, it's also possible there, the, the hotel may, you know. Have some, some version of a projecting sign or want to have a, a version of some projecting sign.
Because I would just reiterate the, Chris's point from earlier, just for the council's consideration. You know, in, in these amendments around all of them, but including ones around sign. The planning commission is trying to look towards the future of the junction. And where we could be going and prepare for that. And so it really is up to you all whether or not, you know, that is just fundamentally not part of your vision for the junction. Or if including it with the development review board oversight is an option you want to. Kind of prepare for. And so, yeah, it really comes down to your preference of, we just want to say. Not, now, not in the near future or. Maybe with development review board, yes, it's kind of your, just the intent was to. Be, look to a future potentiality without any immediate. Need, because we don't have.
But there's also the opportunity down the road to add these sections back in. Except the process, it would be too late to do it if a business came and said, hey, we're putting the marquee up, and then we don't have it, and we have to go back through that process, yeah.
I mean, one compromise might be, you know, Chris just pointed out. Sort of Elijah, future proofing, we haven't seen a TOD study, we don't know what buildings and what types are going to be proposed. This could be included in that. If that makes sense at that point, I'm just trying to find a middle ground on this.
That's a friendly amendment to, for me, removing it now with the, you know, with it being part of a discussion and for the TOD. I mean, again, I, I mean, my thought, the way I, I looked at these Elijah's the same exact way, I, I'm looking at these LD, LDC amendments. As future, not trying to codify what's there, so. I agree.
So this, Amber, this is a question for you because I had not thought about this until you brought it up, so I, I want to just ask. I mean, because as I think about the use cases that this kind of signage might be used for. You know, for instance, what if, what if in redevelopment Essex Junction got its own theater? You know, that might be an, an appropriate type of, you know, marquee would be an appropriate type of signage for that kind of venue. Would, you know, what are your thoughts around, what are your thoughts around that and what impact it may or may not have?
I think it depends, I mean, I, I think Chris said he, he put these in based on what was permitted in those particular zoning districts, so. I mean, I guess, you know, thinking about the, the core, you know, the arterial highway here essentially. And where something like a theater could potentially go, it's going to be right in my front yard essentially. And, you know, so then I think it goes back to the lighting discussion, so like the two kind of, you know, go hand in hand. I, yeah, I don't know, I just, I, I mean, yes, I get it, if, if you put a theater in, like, what is the alternative besides a marquee sign? I don't know. I can't think of anything right now, but I'm not sure that that's the absolute thing that you have to get is a marquee sign. Like, is there something else out there? This is just an example.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, and I think, you know, again, just. Who knows what will come to this community in the future, you know, and I, I'm just, I think the natural. You know, if they were thinking about, hey, I'm going to, I want to, I'd really love a theater here, I'm going to build one. Would be something like that kind of signage because that's kind of been a norm in that area.
Yep.
And I get your point, and then believe me, like, the whole balancing act of. And you don't have to have that kind of signage either, I mean, it's totally possible to have a theater with a completely different type of signage.
Yeah.
It's just what kind of has been done, so.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time picturing Essex. But I feel like theirs is not a marquee. Like theirs is more of like a built into the, built into the, the building.
The sign that says Essex Cinemas on the front of the building.
Yeah, but even like there, I think they have like some signage outside, like as you're looking at the front of the building, but. So yes, I mean, I think that's the thing, is there are other options that even if somebody came to us and said, hey, I want to do a theater. Let's, the, the DRB could look at sign options with them within the rules, that does not mean a marquee.
So you're putting the marquee and the projected signs in one. Kind of request, we can take them one by one?
Yes, I'm asking to remove those and, and understanding that they, there might be a discussion about them when we have the TOD discussion.
Okay, let's go around the room. Marcus, because you're on the screen next to Amber, start with you, marquee, yes or no?
To be honest, I'm okay either way, I, because I absolutely get Amber's point, and I know that we'll talk about this again in the future. So based on the fact that there's no current project and there's no. Current, that we don't know of any, any. Near future projects, I am, I, I will, I will support this. It being on hold until at least that TOD discussion.
Amber's a no. Um, Elaine?
I'm not in favor of removing either of them.
Okay, keep it. Tim?
Um, yeah, I'm kind of, um, I'm okay with leaving them in.
Okay, and I'm, I'm going to say I'd like to hear what the public hearing brings. Um, I'm looking at a picture of the hotel in St. Albans for a projected sign as a comparison, um, that's up on, um.
Lake Street.
Lake Street, thank you, good lord. Um, and they've got a very neat and tidy projected sign on the side of that building with the, with the front flush on and kind of sign in the front and, um, so I'm, I, I'm at least in favor of leaving it in for the public hearing and then we can talk about whether, based on that result, um, we pull it. So I guess we'll keep it for now according to that straw poll. I think food trucks, I'd like, personally, I'd like to see that match the, the noise ordinance time. I don't know if everybody's okay with that.
So that's 10:00 PM.
Okay.
That seems logical.
Tom?
And are there, so the exceptions to that would be the seat, I guess, uh, fair, uh, I just want to, I just want to hear if you have any other exceptions that you, you think need to be written in?
The fair would be, in my head, would be only for waived events for an exception. Otherwise, they typically have to abide by the noise ordinance. Um, I don't see any other that I can think of, but I would, I'm open to examples of what I'm not remembering, I'm not thinking of.
And, well, I, I would also point out that they would still be subject to, to the, the noise ordinance, but this would basically say even if you happen to have a really quiet generator that's not allowed. But, uh, if I'm hearing correctly, this, this, you know, yes, uh, to have the cutoff at 10:00 PM unless it is, uh, they have an event like, uh, unless it's a part of the fair which already has a, a, um, some other exception for, for this.
Yeah, because the, the way I think about the fair waivers, excuse me, is that they're sort of waiving the noise ordinance until a time certain. Um, so that, anything that happens within their, within their zone, um, is covered.
Yeah, I'm thinking it probably would be cleaner to not identify it, call it out in this section per se, because it's just a different.
The fair, you mean?
Yeah.
Because we would waive that regardless, well, under current practice.
Yeah.
We lost Amber on screen, but, um, Amber, Marcus, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Tim, Elaine?
Yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, okay. Um, what were the other questions?
Uh, string lighting, if there needs to be any changes to what's, uh, uh, what's written in there, which currently says 10:00 PM lights out, um, or if your business is closed, you got to turn it off.
Why don't we leave it as written? I would suggest we leave it as written and get some public comment. Um, of course, that means if we change it during the public hearing, we have to have another public hearing. Um, we're not, we don't just get to approve it, but it sounds like we've already got one of those examples where we might be doing that anyway.
The, the string lighting that is in front of Firebird is just out and open, not, where, whereas the string lighting that's used at the Lincoln Inn is out on their deck, but that deck is covered by canopy, so the impact is less. I don't know if there's a distinction there or if we're just saying string lighting in general.
I do, I do think one, it, it's technically easy to make, uh, to make a distinction between something that is otherwise shielded from view from, from adjacent properties.
I think if we can include that language.
That, what is not. Although it, it also might not be kind of, like even the Lincoln Inn one from certain apartments, you may be able to kind of peek into it and that's, uh, there, there, there could still be some, you know, interesting technicalities there.
Yeah, I guess, like I said, I'd vote to keep it the way it is and get public comment and risk, um, risk a second public hearing, I guess. Versus just taking, you know, the other options to take it out or make it later.
Elaine has written.
Okay. Elaine says leave it as written. Tim?
Yeah, I am okay leaving it for now and taking public comment on it.
Uh, Amber, Marcus? Amber's good. Marcus, I think you're okay.
Leaving it in as is, I do, I want to, but I don't, um, because I think, I think it would be good to, um, make sure that we at least reach out to potentially impacted businesses to see if they will come and participate in that conversation. Is that, is that most appropriate for, uh, for Chris and your team or for someone else to connect with, with those businesses?
Uh, we could write to them if you want to be more pers, uh, if you want to more personally reach out, that is, that, that, that is a, an option as well, but I, I don't think I would have the time to go like knock on doors.
I wonder if it might be worth doing a front porch forum post that says we're doing this hearing and particular questions will come up about string lights and businesses. If anyone has particular feedback, that would be a good time to do it.
I mean, that's really specific to a number of changes those.
Well, that's true.
I think we, we do, we do a front porch forum that says, here's the report out, not the LDC changes, and we encourage you to come read this report, which is brief, specific, and say if you think this will impact. And if anybody wants to reach out to owners of businesses and say, you know, this is what, this is what's coming potentially, um, we're not going to reach every potential business, understand that.
No, we're not.
So, but we, we can try. But I would definitely, I think we're definitely going to do some, some outreach around messaging that we're doing in the public hearing.
Great.
No, I appreciate that. I, I didn't, I just wanted to make sure, I did, I'm not trying to impose work, additional work on any of the staff, so I just wanted to make sure that I was, um.
Just want to make.
Ask you the appropriate question.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm clear on, on this. Because I think what I'm understanding, if we're silent on string lights, we take this out, that means technically they are not allowed anywhere. No string lights allowed. So this is actually opening a window to allow them. So I don't know that the businesses that use their string lights now, if they were to come in and say, we want to be able to keep our string lights on for as long as we want now, technically can't keep their string lights on at all.
Fun.
So I, I think this is better.
Yeah, right. I think the, the question is 10 or 1 or closing time or, you know, what is it? And it, it will be interesting testimony. I doubt, well, here we want to turn them off at 10, um, and it will have zero impact. But I, I think the conversation's worth having with them because it will have an impact. Okay, so leave it as written, I think is, is how we're going. Chris, what was the last one? Sorry.
Uh, storefronts at sidewalk level?
I think we probably aren't going to do anything with that this round, I think. Is that correct, everybody?
I think that's a lot more complicated.
Yeah, that sounds, yeah.
I think also it's, um, a little out of line to make a decision on that without the planning commission's taking a look at it first and their, um, input on it.
And.
And the last i- issue was more, sounded like more of a question about election period signs?
Right, I don't know if that's so much, so, so how does, how is that supposed to work now?
It seems clear in code as it is.
So it's, um, in, in the proposed version, it's classified specifically as an election period sign because of content neutrality, can't be like an election sign, but during the times when there's an election or the two, two weeks, uh, be, I think it's, I think it says two weeks, but, um, it, you can have any sign out, you can have advertising out. I mean, it's, uh, but then you have to put it away, the, the, when it's over.
60 days prior, removed within three days after. One per street frontage, which is a lot. Oh, no, it's a construction sign.
Election period sign, yeah.
So this is on.
Six max per property.
I think part of the question is public right of way, time period. That, that's a big question.
Yeah, like the median on Pearl Street.
Yeah.
Which, you know, I think was generally understood that was a, that was never available and then became immediately available last election.
I believe we talked about making public right of ways available for election period signs two weeks before to be consistent with adjacent municipalities.
That's correct. And, and state, uh, and what state says on state owned high, uh, state owned highways.
Is that in here?
That isn't it.
That would be a change of current practice too, in terms of, sorry. That would be a change of current practice in terms of what is allowed with election based signs in the right of way the two weeks prior. Is that correct?
Feels like it.
Yeah.
I think that's what Marcus was saying.
Yeah, the town always did two weeks and we were limited, we were not, we did not have the two week window, we had a much shorter window in Essex Junction, if I recall correctly. So this would be a change to match what the town is doing.
And where is that? I see, I see on, in the Word doc on the documents, page 183 at the bottom, election period signs, but I don't see a timeframe. 60 days and three days, but I don't see the other for public spaces.
I might not be able to tell you right away.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is 60 days.
It's extensive.
That's, that's a long time.
Yeah, and that's, I'm not yet, I don't have a quibble with the time period. I'm more concerned about the public land, the right of way versus the, um, versus private. And I wouldn't know how to search for that either.
Yeah, I might not be able to dig that up immediately. I, I, I do remember that was discussed.
Okay, I absolutely believe you.
But it, it is, there are always, there's always a potential that things could have been, you know, left out after it was discussed.
That's fair, that's fair, I understand. All right, well, it sounds like we have, go ahead, sir.
I think what the council could probably do is provide clear direction on this and then we can make sure that whatever goes forward to public hearing is what it is. So I think the question for the council is, are you okay with election per, signs that will go up in the election period? Are you okay with those being within the city right of way or not?
I think with surrounding municipalities, the practice is two weeks before the election day, signs are allowed in the right of way. And I would, I think we would want to be in, in, doing it similarly to other municipalities because we do it differently.
And if Public Works deems that they're a traffic hazard, they can pull them, but I haven't seen that much.
I mean, we've all had our signs pulled by both Public Works and VTранs.
Yeah.
And the rules are there. Um, it's, it's that time window that's different and it always provokes conversation and mistakes every year, so.
Is that the clarity you were looking for?
That is.
Okay, and then removed within the three days would, would remain.
Yeah.
For that as well, I would imagine. Marcus, is that, is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, that helps, but, uh, did I hear right that there's a limitation of six?
So that is talking about on private property. Yeah, so the, well, what was just mentioned was in the right of way, um, there's kind of no limit to how many is right of way is infinity.
If only.
Signs are expected to use.
But then. Sorry, just so then, again, I'm clear, especially in a political year where you've got, you know, just about every seat is up for grabs, one way or the other. And I know that in, in recent years, there have been times when I've had probably at least six political signs, let alone just a couple of community signs that I had in my, in my yard. I mean, at what point is my, my, is it six political signs? Is it my six political signs plus, I'm just thinking, there are times when it, with the number of races, it, there is a potential that it could exceed six and then throw in my yard sign itself, help each other. Do, have I exceeded that limit if I have six political signs in my help each other sign?
Well, it has to be content neutral.
Well, they're not political. We're not calling them political signs, right?
Our, our rules have to be content neutral, so really the question is the quantity, right?
Square footage, potentially.
Square footage of signage.
Is there a, when you say six, Chris, is there a, huh, um, just having had, how big are my yard signs going to be conversation this year? Is there a dimension max on that?
Uh, yes, I believe so, um, I'm, I should be able to, that I should be able to.
Awesome, oh, great, okay. Can I have 12 12 by 18s, but six 18 by 24s, for instance?
My God.
I know. Well, I mean, I would just assume, I don't know how we come up with a number as Marcus is asking. I was being, I was mostly kidding, but like, I don't know how we come up with a number, or putting a, do we put a number?
I mean, I could, I mean, I could see six just having one sign for each race. So, uh, yeah.
Max for any individual sign for election period signs on private property.
Wow.
So your lawn signs could be so much bigger.
Well, six, that's a massive, that's a massive amount of information out there. I mean, that's like 36 square feet.
But then there is, um.
Right? But so, does that violate the state's billboard law? Signs that big?
Of course they don't.
Six square foot.
Okay.
Two by.
Two by three.
Three foot by two foot.
Yeah.
Six of those.
Six of those.
Okay. So Marcus, I don't know, you could say, or 36 square feet, however you want to cut it up, and just have a giant banner going across the front of your house.
Uh, a, a, a creative way to, to stretch the number of, uh, messages you could have is for one sign to have a different message on each side.
Ooh. I, I'm just concerned that my, my wife is home right now with, um, already exceeding the maximum number of signs in our yard.
At least she's not at a restaurant with straight lines.
Can we just say that the signs that are currently in your front yard are not political and so there should fore be exempt?
There, we can't do that anymore.
You can't do that.
Oh, yeah, content neutral.
All right, well, at the risk of this going on forever, does anyone have a suggestion for how they might change that? Okay, so let's leave it as written. Add in, ask staff for the public hearing to add in the two weeks for public right of ways with the three days removal. And if anybody comes to the public hearing with a better idea, um, for the quantity in the front yard, then we'll make an adjustment. How's that sound? Sure.
And this may be a nonstarter or hold separate conversation. What if, just to think about different things you could limit, uh, in terms of the signage? What if, to Marcus's point, you've got a whole bunch of people running? What if the limit is like per candidate?
You could do that. I was thinking about that for the, um, trying not to have the Pearl Street corridor filled with 400 signs that all say two candidates' names. Um, that's a cost prohibitor, but.
It's not, yeah, it's not content neutral.
Okay, that is content, right? Yeah. Okay, so back to the previous, I think, is everybody comfortable with my? Okay, so back to the previous, I think, is everybody comfortable with my?
Okay, so we're keeping the sixty days on the private property, and we're adding two weeks within the right-of-way.
Yep.
Remove, okay.
And because the motion will likely say, as with proposed changes, I'd like to specify right now that that includes an adjustment that Chris made to the sandwich board ordinance to keep it the same, but modify the references. So when I say as amended, or as proposed, that includes that change for the record. And that is available for, for folks as well.
And I guess also any grammar or spelling errors that.
And, and for the record, I just emailed one while we were here that I know that wasn't picked up before to you and Regina. Very minor. All right. Anything else before we move on? Doesn't look like it. So with that, I move the City Council Warren the Land Development Code amendments as discussed, and including proposed changes made during this meeting for a public hearing on February 12th, 2025.
No, second.
Great, in seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Great, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you both for coming and.
Thank you.
Yes.
And helping us through that.
Yes, thanks for talking us through.
Really interested in what you want to talk about and what you didn't want to talk about.
Well, to be honest, I would rather talk about some of the other changes in a place where I, I just, there's so much in here.
Yeah.
And as you said earlier, a lot of it probably won't, in most places, won't, will be sort of still prohibited, it feels like, for what, for various reasons. Sorry, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks very much, everyone.
All right. Another light topic, five C discussion consideration of the FY26 general fund budget, potential warning of a budget, public hearing. Jess is here, running virtually. Thanks for sticking with us, Jess.
Okay, so you have now in your packet an edited version of the budget. So this is the second version of the budget. We have four different things in the narrative. The first section goes through what was changed in there, whether it was an addition or a reduction. We also have then what those changes look like in the summary of the budget. So at this point, we are at a two percent increase to the FY26 general fund over FY25. We've got that same summary table that shows. I'm not sure that summary table is right. It still shows 1.5 percent. Anyway, we'll get that clarified.
That's the tax rate increase, not the budget.
Oh, yes, thank you.
So that is correct.
So that is correct, sorry. So that two percent increase for the general fund results in a 1.5 percent increase on the tax rate, so forty-two dollars on your average $280,000 assessed home. What you've also got in here is an update to the enterprise budgets, and as a reminder, the enterprise budgets will continue to change. They continue to change for a number of months as we get more usage data behind them, and those are approved by the council. Later in the spring, it is not approved by the voters, but we have updated that information as best as we can for the council now, so you can see the total impact to the residents. So all collectively, that is $226, because the utility rates are going up by almost fifteen percent. Next, in this narrative, we have some further information around this concept of an unassigned fund balance and how to more proactively plan for that. Essentially, long and short of it, after doing some additional research, staff recommendation at the end of the day is that fifteen percent is still a great practice. If we can get there, that would be fantastic, but we are feeling comfortable that the village has historically been around seven percent. And so we feel pretty good that we've landed there the last two years and think that we're probably okay at this point. And especially when you think about that in, in relation to capital planning. The capitalist is a solid list of projects that we know that we need to plan for. We know that we are, continue to be in a period where things cost a lot more money, whether we like it or not, no matter how much we try to increase those rates to a reasonable percentage increase from year to year. And so our, after sort of really kind of taking a look at this more collectively, our recommendation at this point is to continue with capital increases year over year. We can continue to try to operationally get to an increased fund balance, but again, we think we're probably okay where we are. Also, we wanted to just point out, in, in an emergency emergency, it is possible for the council to reassign funds, if necessary. Jess, anything you want to add on this topic?
The only other thing I would add is, and it's in the memo, that the point of if it's an emergency emergency, the council also has the ability to enter into short-term borrowing agreements. So with capital, that's not a possibility. It's either you've got the cash on hand or you don't do it, or you borrow, but it has to be voter-approved. So that's one, one plus to, I guess, an emergency situation, is that we do have other options available to us to fund those emergencies.
Thank you. So then, next on the list is the equity policy advisor position. So we have included that $25,000 in because the council asked us to, but you also have a little bit of an update of what that's unfortunately looking like in the other communities. So it is in for ours and Winuski's budget, but it is unfortunately, at this stage, not in South Burlington's, Essex, or Shelburne's. It is also in GMT, it's, it's in GMT's budget so long as they can use their federal funds to do this position, which is a little trickier right now. So I have not had a chance to speak with Elaine in Winuski yet. I, I plan to do that because her budget is approved. It's, it's moving forward with, with that in. So I'd like to have a conversation with her and talk with CCRPC and see if we can come up with some kind of alternative plan or something.
Maybe we could share a part-time person with Winuski.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would still like to keep that conversation going, for sure.
Yeah.
Sounds like, yeah, great.
So, and just to be clear, it's not as if the, the concept is not supported by the other communities, it's just pressures from other places that made that challenging. So. Then we just have some answers to some of the questions that came up last time. So the $30,000 for the maintenance facility for EJR P, that is for the Maple Street Park maintenance building and really just out of space and is not accommodating what they need right now, so that's the intention of that. Question about where we are with the rec, parking recs facility study. So EJR P staff have been kind of thinking about this quite a bit and trying to figure out what's the, what's the right thing to move first, and it's really very evident that the real, real need is some sort of universal multi-use space, gym-like space. So, and so they're looking at that possibility at Maple Street Park, and it may make logical sense if we can move that project potentially with a Public Works building for bond vote next year as a possibility.
Without the, without the deep look at the facility study or the master plan?
Yeah, just to be able to sort of get those projects going because we know they're in need and just be able to move them, move them forward. I do think, big picture, it's, it's helpful for both the facility and the ultimately getting the rec master plan updated, because that is a need and we will need to do it. Having the rec advisory in place is really helpful for both of those purposes and projects. So that's, that's kind of our current thinking right now. It's not, not set in stone or anything, but that's, that's what we're thinking. Then there was also a question about the loader and the sweeper and the command vehicle for the fire truck in the rolling stock. So Jess and Ricky were able to look at the timing of the loader and the sweeper replacements and able to look, you see on the first page of the memo, able to look at some sidewalk plows and replacement schedule for those and different kinds of equipment, that we were able to move those two pieces of equipment up two years respectively. The command vehicle for the fire department is in the need category from the fire chief, and really the intention of this vehicle is to provide the responding chief the ability to respond directly to calls, eliminating to go to the station first, get the truck, and then move out from there.
So, so this would be a shared vehicle that the on-call chief would have it there with them?
Yeah.
Instead of driving their vehicle to the station to then pick up?
Yeah.
Okay.
When you think about these two pieces together, there is no, there's, if you thought about taking the $70,000 out for the command vehicle, it does not give us any shift whatsoever in the loader and sweeper replacements. If the command vehicle is pushed back, we can do that. The price of it will probably increase because we'll have to assume increased costs further out. Yeah, so I, I think the idea on the command vehicle is to be able to set up for a command post if needed more quickly and more easily. You know, I do think we are still pretty lucky that we're operating as a volunteer department, and not a volunteer department is a very, very, very different price point for the city. So I think whatever we can do to keep in that status, the better. Okay. Then, for the rest of this, Elaine was able to meet with staff at GBIC. So, because we still have that outstanding question about whether to fund GBIC this year or not. So Elaine, I don't know if you want to give an update?
Sure, yeah, I did meet with GBIC's vice president and wanted to just talk to them about the benefit of GBIC to Essex Junction, and really predominantly, it's an assistance to us in that they are very attentive to Global Foundries. And it is the Greater Burlington Industrial Corporation, and Global is the only industry in Essex Junction, and it is the only industry that can be in Essex Junction. We don't have a lot of manufacturers, light manufacturing, so their work with Global is important on a statewide level, and their work in the county and the outer, outlying areas of Jitney County is extremely important. It's one of those situations where Essex Junction is not necessarily benefiting directly, but is part of the overall economy. And so since we're only talking about $3,750, my recommendation would be to refund, you continue to honor the ask and then continue doing that going forward, because it's just, it's in our best interest to make sure that we have, that we are able to support Global, support other industries in the town of Essex and other areas around Essex Junction, and then considering the cost, I think it's a worthwhile investment.
Excellent.
Okay, uh, thank you. So then, the rest of this memo really is just talking about next steps. So as a reminder and good public service announcement, this Saturday, we're having a very exciting event at CBE. Starting at 11:30, we'll have lots of different community tables. I think there are about eighteen different groups that will, that will be there, including lots of different city departments with different projects that we're talking about, like the transit-oriented development project that was mentioned in the previous agenda item, and then at, then we'll have lunch, and then we'll, we will be presenting the budget that, that afternoon. So any edits that the council would like today, our plan, unless they're particularly complex, our plan is to try to get those worked into the system over the next two days so that what we are presenting out on Saturday is whatever changes you folks come up with tonight, and what will be in your public hearing version for February 12th.
Great.
So that's, that's that.
All right. Any questions? Start with Elaine.
So we're opening to discussion to the memo and changes, okay. So I really appreciate the additional research that was done regarding our fund balance, and I think it's great. We've been, over, for years, been able to keep it at seven percent. We've been consistent, which is excellent. I'm also glad to see that there is a mechanism that we could add a line item, should we want to have a specific amount of funds dedicated towards building our fund balance. I want to advocate for doing that. I, I realize that keeping it at seven percent has been past practice, and seven percent is about $842,000, which honestly is not that much. And if we were to raise enough money to build it to fifteen percent, we would need to raise at least a million dollars. And so if we rely on any particular overages that we have year to year, it could take us a very, very long time to get to fifteen percent, and with our budget growing year to year, it would just never stop, we'd never be able to reach it. So I want to propose something to think about. With the, with a one percent increase to the budget, or to the tax rate equalling $110,000, if we were to set aside 0.5 percent, or let's say $55,000 a year, it would take us twenty years to get to fifteen percent. If we set aside one percent, it would take us ten. I would like to suggest that we think about setting aside one percent a year until we get to the fund balance, and then once we get there, we can rely on our operational adjustments to maintain fifteen percent. But I really want us to think about it because it's going to take us ten years to get there, at least. at least. That's my proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, can I just add one more thing?
Absolutely.
Keeping in mind that if we did that, we would still only be at a 2.5% budget increase, not a 3% like we asked staff to come in at. So the fact that the staff did such an amazing job at presenting a lean budget makes me feel a little better about presenting this idea.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
We'll just keep going to the left.
Well, I was, I was going to say, while this budget year would certainly allow for that, the police chief sat here at Budget Day and said that they're going to start entering contract negotiations. And those contract negotiations are going to lead to large increases in the salaries that we have no control over. The town of Milton, I believe, just got 38%. Colchester was in the 30%.
Over how many years?
I believe the term of the contract is four years. So there are going to be some pretty strong headwinds in the future. And while we're a leg up this year from historic, what has been the relative historic, and we're afforded the luxury of it this year, it may not be the case in, in years to come. And while I'm 100% on board with trying to fund the future, I just want to take note that we may not have the luxury to do that every year. I'm still, personally, I would love to see the replacement of that public works stuff come up another year. As I know the street sweeper, it serves, you know, not only public works, but it does get us some stormwater credit and it's a pretty valuable piece of equipment as far as money coming back into the municipality from the state and keeping our stormwater up to par. I don't know enough about the loader to, you know, I, I would just say, from a historical standpoint, when things fall off and repairs get more expensive and then, you know, parts become harder to get, we all know that, and it's been exacerbated through the years, especially as of late. So I also really would love to be aware of that. And I do genuinely want to say thank you to everyone that put this budget together that gets us to really what is a fantastic number. Just would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the fact that we do not have a crystal ball to see what next year looks like. And there is already some, you know, some information that's trickling to us that is going to be difficult as we talk to the future budgets.
Thanks, Tim. Marcus?
Thanks. So a couple of things. And first, based on, on what I've heard, I have a couple of questions. First, Regina, I mean, based on the conversations you've had with EJRP, I'm, I am curious about this space because I think what we've heard for a long time is more than just a gym space. What we've heard for a long time is the need for this particular study based on the fact that while right now the gym is, from my understanding, one of the biggest thorns in EJRP's side because it's difficult to get and expensive. Totally understand that that would probably be one of those spaces we would need, but it's also sounded like for a walk, for quite a certain time now, they've needed more and the current facility hasn't been able to accommodate that. And so having an understanding of, of their total needs, what that space looks like, I assumed would, would also take into account potentially Park Street, looking at that property along with what's happening at Maple Street altogether. So all those EJRP programs coming together and that, that study evaluating what our city need is. I, I just want to make sure that we don't ignore something and we build some extension, you know, for instance, we get to that point, we're just planning to build some extension for a gym, but then we don't need some other needs that also need to be taken care of in a potential redevelopment of EJRP facilities.
Great question, and I think it's, it makes good, good sense. And the benefit of EJRP, and some of this is because of their program funding, they really have the ability to be quite nimble in terms of programming and what, and what they can do from one year to the next. So I think they've been able to really innovate along the way on new programs that come up or, or other things that they may want to shift and, and do. And I think the focus on this space is not going to be to the detriment of really trying to figure out the bigger, the bigger picture. It's just a matter of how quickly should we move on one, one or the other? I think a, you know, a real master plan effort is no small thing. It's going to take quite amount, quite amount of time and it certainly should be done. And I, we intend to do it. But I think the writing is very much on the wall right now. We need very flexible gym space that can be used for a whole slew of things between dance space or basketball or, you know, really just a very useful space that can be used for all kinds of different things, even like to the point of, you know, you sort of shrink all the walls, that's not the word, collapse the walls?
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about?
The partition, the fan partition, yeah.
And, you know, and it's an assembly space for, for the city. Like I, I can't imagine that we aren't going to need a space like that. So the, the thought is to just try to be able to move forward on it. So.
No, I appreciate that. I, I, you know, I want, I'll bring up, you know, two former counselors who, who, when they left the council, you know, set, you know, stated how they really wanted, you know, an indoor facility space for EJRP, which is different than an open, you know, an open gym kind of space. And I'm not saying that's what we want to do. I'm just simply saying like, if there's that interest in the community for those kinds of spaces, along with other things that could again, help EJRP do the existing programs as well as potentially expanding their programs into other ways of generating revenue to, you know, cover the costs of all the great things that they do. I just, I just don't want to miss out on that opportunity by, by rushing to judgment. And so I'll move on to the next, my, my next question. And Elaine, if you don't mind, I, I would like to inquire on GB, on GBIC, from the standpoint of, I would like to understand a little bit better. And again, I don't want to dwell on this because I know it's only about $3,500. But last year, we, well, you know, we talked about this and I kind of feel like the, one of the, I feel like the reasons that you've expressed sounds similar to what we kind of knew last year and we made the decision as a council to step away from that. And I'm just wondering if there's something I, maybe I don't quite get, and I'd just like to understand a little bit better about what your perception is of GBIC this year that may have changed in comparison to last year.
I think honestly, a little of that had to do with the members of the board at the time. There were, there were some concerns and unhappiness regarding the departure of a few small businesses from Essex Junction to other, other parts of Chittingen County that were perceived to be influenced by GBIC in a way that harmed Essex Junction, which was not necessarily the case and is also water under the bridge. Because in the end, businesses decide where to go, not the city or GBIC. And I'll, I readily admit, I was one of the folks who voted against. I had, myself, I was concerned about their claims that they were funding Essex Junction businesses during COVID. Really what was going on is they were helping Essex Junction and other Chittingen County businesses navigate the COVID funding and the pandemic emergency funds and helping them apply for grants. So it was really a semantic difference. But in the end, honestly, it's, I think it's in our best interest, Chittingen County's best interest if all the municipalities participate. And it's not that much and we have a very large company in our municipality that benefits from their services.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Marcus, you know, just to, as one of the people that was challenging them last year, I specifically challenged them to diversify their board.
Oh.
And I think that's a question we should be asking of everyone that comes before us and it's something I've brought up quietly with other representatives too, outside of our meetings. They have appeared to have made a change, if not more changes to that. So I think I made my point and we'll, we'll see how it goes one year into the next.
I apologize for not remembering to share that, that yes, they did specifically state that that was an observation that you made and they wanted to let us know that they have a new member who is a person of color.
Yeah, and hopefully they, hopefully they don't just, hopefully they don't think that that work is done. I don't, I don't imagine they will, but hopefully when we come back to this next year, we're seeing that continue a bit. That would be my expectation to approve it then.
Thanks, I really appreciate that insight. Again, last year, much like Tim is probably experiencing this year, you know, last year was my, my first budget process on the council. And so in a lot of ways, I relied very heavily on, on you all and I still do rely on you very heavily. So I, I do appreciate your insight a great deal. So thank you for that. A, a budget question that I do have, and this goes to the senior center fund and I just, real, just curiosity, as I was kind of rereading, going through things, I know that we are planning to, that's still remaining separate, but it's also not moving, we agreed last year that it wasn't going to move into the programs fund. I'm, I guess I'm not remembering quite what our reasoning is. Can we not put it in the program fund and keep it separate? Or will it be sucked into something else potentially if that's the case? Because I'm, I'm just want, because I know that I see it in the financials, what is the sheet, the, the financial fact sheet? But I'm not seeing it necessarily in line items in the general fund. So I'm not sure where, I guess I'm, it's not clear to me how that exists outside of that fact sheet.
Take it away, Jess.
All right. So it is not part of the general fund because it is its own distinct separate fund, much like the enterprise funds are. So what we had decided to do last year is essentially that senior center fund was supporting center as it existed when we were combined with the town. When the city started developing their own adult programming, we decided last year to move that under the umbrella of the general fund and basically ride out a little bit of time to see how that program would develop and also get through the Tulinkin renovations before we determine how those senior center funds that are in that separate fund on the books will be used going forward. Those funds were all raised, not all, the majority of them were raised in fees or revenue that came in specifically for senior programming. So we can't commingle them with the general fund. It's similar to the way the EJRP program fund is set up. It's its own kind of like set of books and business separate from what we do every day within the general fund. So this year again, because Tulinkin has not been renovated yet, we will be holding that money to the side. It's gaining interest, so it's not, we're not losing any money there. We are actually growing the pot slightly and determine hopefully in the next budget cycle for FY '27, more of what that money is intended for and will be used for going forward.
Thank you for that. And I'll, I'll bring up why it brought me confusion then. It's a clarity of words from me in the fact that it says, as of FY '25, the city plans to run all senior programming through the general fund, again in FY '26. The balance of the senior center fund will remain blah, blah, blah.
Yep.
It sounds like we're talking about the same thing, we're actually not. We're talking about two different things. That brings me a lot of clarity. Thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem, Marcus. And the other thing that we did last year, sort of Brad and Regina and I kind of threw the budgeting process last year, made the change to calling it the adult programming department, basically within EJRP to kind of give a little bit more distinction between those two things as well.
Appreciate that. All right, thank you. And I'll just wrap up with this and say, again, I have to echo the sentiments that have already been expressed, not just in this meeting, in the previous. I really do appreciate the effort that the staff has gone through to hit this, this mark that we set earlier or later last year. And I really do appreciate that we're able to have these, these broader discussions because I think this is giving room and rise to be able to, for us to talk about some things that we couldn't talk about if we were under the pressure of trying to like just cut, cut, cut. So I, I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Amber, anything on this?
Nothing to add right now, thanks.
Okay, me either. So.
We only know how Tim feels about Elaine's proposal.
I, just kidding there. I'm going to go back to Elaine, following Tim's comments and see if you've changed any of that, following Tim's, Tim's comments on your proposal for the general, for the fund balance.
Uh, no, to be honest, we will have our own agreement to renegotiate in three years. Inflation is what it is, costs are going to go up. And that means if there's an emergency and we're caught short and we don't have enough in our fund balance, we'll be forced to borrow. And I understand that there's other competing pressures financially, but in the end, we still need a, we still need a healthy fund balance. So no, I haven't changed that much.
Okay, no, that sounds good. I'm, I'm open to it and I'm open to it also because we have a, a number of opportunities to get feedback from the community on it and how they feel about it. I want to say, specific to the police department, well, I believe we have a five-year notice for either departing it or renegotiating it. I have to go look at it again and that is coming up sooner than we think. Within a couple of years. So we'll have a lot more information on what we want to do with that. I would be curious to see what Marcus and Amber think about that proposal. Just jump in if you have thoughts about it, one way or another.
I'll, I'll let Amber first.
About it, I'd be curious if you want to put this to the, put this in the budget for now and see what people think on Saturday.
I am actually open to it. I think it would be okay to put it in there, knowing the fact that we've got this community discussion coming up. I think that would be an appropriate thing to do at this time.
You're muted. You just realized.
My reflexes are not as quick at nine o'clock at night as 4:15 in the morning. So I'm, I'm open to it, but I, I guess I'm, I'm interested in the thoughts from Jess or Regina who suggested that we hold the line at this point.
So, yeah, I mean, my opinion is that really we were kind of looking at it collectively in terms of what do you do? Do you fund capital at the same rate or do you not? I think if you wanted to increase the general fund to do this, I don't, I don't have any problem with that. I do think that the utility rates are also going up though, like, and I, so I hear that, I do, you know, we were able to get and meet your target, more so meeting your target. And it does seem like there is room on the tax rate. I will just caution that I will just caution that that, the utility rate side of the equation is not great, so collectively, it's still a pretty tough year.
Yeah, and we, we don't have a firm figure and information on the stormwater utility cost yet, which will come back to us in the near future. The estimated utility rate right now is twice what our estimated general fund increase is, for the average user. That is giving me pause, but again, I'm, we are fortunate to have an opportunity to hear what the community thinks, so I say we, we give it a shot, and if we pull it out, we pull it out.
Also, I was not recommending that we change capital. I know last time I said, let's reduce capital, but I'm not saying that this time.
Straight increase.
Straight increase, yeah.
Sorry, just curious, do want to give Jess some space there. Jess, any thoughts?
Um, it's comical to me, because I actually went to Regina with information and was like, so we have room, because they told us 3%, and we're at 2%. So there's, you know, initially my thought was, we can totally do this, this is the time to do it. And then we started talking about utility rates, and I was like, oh, right, 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 right. So I do, I, I mean, I see both sides. I am a very cautious planner myself, I tend to be, so I would advocate for it. The utility rate, users have some control over rates based on what they consume and use of the system, so like, you know, if people are watering their lawns, or, and washing their cars, like, there are things that people can somewhat control in their water consumption, for example, which also relates then to their sanitation and wastewater fees. So, I, I mean, I, I, like I said, I'm a planner naturally, so I would advocate for it, but I totally see the, the, it's the same challenge that we're faced with every year, sort of thinking of like, the city rates versus the school, the education rates on the tax bill as well.
I think it'd be great to be able to be as complete as we can. How much are we able to present, or are we planning to present on Saturday related to the draft utility rates? Much more than this? Or are we planning on getting into like a draft, kind of early look at what the enterprise funds were going to be, or is this strictly general fund conversation?
I think we can present, you know, this very summary position.
Say, this is going to be in the ballpark of the?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I think that's a, I mean, it's an important point to be able to make, if we're going to talk about this on Saturday, and I think another point too is, every one of these 1% years gets us closer to the target. If there's a year where we have to take a year off, we're still X number of years prior closer to the target, and a little bit better positioned to deal with whatever, so we're not asking for a 10-year policy where we can't change it, we're just saying, you know, this is a good time to try this right now, and if next year it's not, then it's not.
Do 1% whenever we can.
If it's a quarter percent next year.
Important note, yeah.
And again, we have the, we have the opportunity for input, but, Marcus?
So for clarity, I'm thinking about this from the perspective of when we talk about the utility increases overall, what is the, what is the impact of the stormwater as a portion of that? Because if the stormwater wasn't a portion of that, because I, based on my understanding, the stormwater is a portion of that utility, overall utility fee that we're showing, without it, there would obviously be impact on the general fund, but, you know, and it wouldn't be impacting the utility rate. So I guess if we can provide any clarity around that, that might help to understand a little bit around that. I don't know if that's easy or not, but I, that's, that was my initial thought when we were talking about the concern over the utility, utility increase, because my thinking around this, based on what I understand, how we've discussed this, is that really this is, a lot of this probably got to do with the fact that the stormy utility, stormwater utility is coming up.
Yeah, and I think really, that's a very simple explanation, and the explanation is, we have a stormwater budget now that is much more, that is sized correctly for what we really need, and we are intending to do that as a utility, so that that cost burden is shared universally throughout the city. But even if we didn't do that, that budget is just going to go in the general fund, and so if you think about it as a city as a whole, we got to pay for that, no matter which bucket it's in. So it's either you're going to see that showing up on the tax rate, or you're going to see it showing up as a utility. So, and the point is correct, that it is an increased budget over last year, because last year we were only sort of taking kind of baby steps to kind of get that set up. Now we're looking at what that complete budget looks like, so it is, it is a big increase regardless of what side of the equation it's on.
So it looks like, yeah, it looks like it'd be a 400, if I'm looking at this correctly, a $450,000 increase to the general fund.
Yeah.
Which would be about 4.5% on the tax rate.
Yes.
Which would equate to much more than the $89 or $90 projected per ERU for the stormwater utility, by a good amount, more than half. So the addition to the budget would probably be more, about twice as much on the tax rate, on the, on the average house, if I'm thinking about this correctly.
Sounds like it's, I mean, again, I'm thinking about how we communicate this to the public, and how we, you know, help them understand this, and, you know, that alone, like, if it would be such an increase on the general fund in such a way, that that overall burden would be higher, if it were the, if we were to go back in time. So while maybe facing this particular increase, it's still, you know, it's the best, most economical way in order to, do we need to do to cover the costs of the work that needs to be done for our residents?
Yeah. And, yeah, and to Raj's point, it would complicate things a little bit, but just want to be clear, if we were actually to put the 475 into the general fund budget now, the general fund wouldn't look like a $475,000 increase, it would look like, because you're comparing it to last year, which had, I'm going to make this up, yeah, two something in there. But compared to what you have right now, that has zero, it is $475 coming in there and adding to FY26.
Thank you for clearing that up, because that's what I was thinking, was compared to our current estimate of not having it there.
Yep.
Okay, so it sounds like we're in agreement to present the potential 1% addition to cover an increase, or an addition to our general fund balance, pardon me. Well, I'm kind of scrolling through this memo, I didn't hear any other substantive, oh, sorry, Tim brought up loader and street sweeper.
Moving up a year earlier.
Moving up a year earlier, I'm not sure what that does to our decision point tonight, because that's more of a rolling stock adjustment.
Yeah.
That is more, as far as I understand it, on the background, not so much on a contribution level.
I think so, the only thing I want to ask out loud, and this is mostly for Jess, I, am I correct in thinking that the only possible way to do that is to add, is to do a greater increased general fund transfer into the rolling stock this year for FY26?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so it does have an impact, sorry, I'm just trying to get in my head about what that would be.
Yeah.
Can you give us an idea of how, how much we'd have to, just, you know, off the top of your head, just kind of, you know, if you have that number, if you have a ballpark of what we would, let's take them one at a time, because Tim proposed them sort of separately. He'd like to see the street sweeper done, he'd like to see the loader done. I feel like both is a big lift, but I'd be curious to see what that, if you can do that quickly, what that would look like for a transfer increase.
Maybe, it's very possible it is not realistic, but especially the street sweeper, I mean, you guys see that, I mean, I see it go by all the time, and I know that it, there's ramifications to it for our stormwater, and so I'm just thinking, like, I think initially it should have been replaced in '24, if I recall what we said correctly, and so I know that's a 10-year cycle, but I also know that these machines change out quite a bit, and the technology changes, and the parts become harder, and things wear out, especially on this, to the rate at which we use this thing.
So we are, we, no, good job, because you gave me time to open the spreadsheet and take a look quick. The, in order to move, so the loader is before the sweeper, as far as replacements go, so we have that now at 28, FY28, where, and the sweeper is at FY29. If we wanted to move any of those, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's not, it's not like, you know, $70,000 for the command vehicle doesn't make a dent, so we're talking probably, you know, $200,000 to $400,000 additional.
The last meeting, we were at where we discussed this, the $70,000 for the command vehicle equated to moving those units up a year, and that's no longer the case?
That wasn't the case at the last meeting, I was going to look at it, yeah.
Okay, I misunderstood.
The, the, the only reason we were able to move both of those pieces of equipment up is because Ricky has identified a, an alternative replacement for the sidewalk plows that is significantly more cost-effective, and replacing two existing machines with one new machine. So that's really where the, where the savings came from, to allow us to move those two items.
I don't think there were any other, and this is, if I forgot yours, I apologize, I don't have written, and I don't think there were any other substantive suggestions for changes to this.
I, unless I missed it, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Did we go around the room on the adding the GBIC?
I think we're doing that, yes. Are we doing that? Thumbs up for Marcus, Tim, Elaine, Raj, Amber?
Good with me?
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I missed that.
It's okay, nope.
I wasn't here for last year's conversation, so if you all are good with adding it, I think it's, and if it supports Global Foundry in any way, shape, or form.
We don't need to make a decision on the EJRP building, we don't need to talk about the fund studies for EJRP anymore. So, it sounds like a motion would sound something like moving this for a public hearing on February 12th with proposed changes from this evening, tonight's proposed changes.
Yep.
Okay. Does anybody want to make that motion? I've had a lot of fun with motions tonight, so. Anyone? It's on page 56.
I'll move to set the public hearing on the FY26 budget for Wednesday, February 12th, 2025, at 6:30 PM.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Yes.
As amended this evening.
As amended this evening.
I'll second. Thank you, sir.
You just told me to do that, and then I, and then you didn't do it.
It's okay, it's late.
It's after nine, and I seconded, although, you know what we didn't do? Anybody online? Give me a second to look at, I looked before if anybody was there, and that's why I think it's gone. There's nobody here.
There's nobody else.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Great job.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jess, thank you, all department heads, everyone who worked on this, we really appreciate it. I'm eager to see what the community says, and have lunch with everyone. Please come out on the Saturday, 11:30 at the fairgrounds, for a community meal, and a discussion on the budget, and to meet a lot of our community volunteers, we'll be there as well. Consideration of council member appointments to the governance committee, 5D.
So you've got a memo, and essentially you've appointed the seven other positions to the governance committee, now we need the two council members who are going to sit on this committee, and then we can get it going.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to put their name in for being on the governance committee for the city council?
I did volunteer last meeting when we talked about it.
Excellent, Elaine Haney, is there anyone else? Marcus, is your hand on the screen? Yeah, I got you.
I, I would, I would publicly state that I would very much support both of the members that have been in council, and not from a sarcastic point either, but I think.
Not as I would.
I think they both have a voice that has some history, and some insight, and I would strongly support both of them.
Amber, any, any interest?
I would strongly support myself not being on the committee.
Well, with that, I will, because of the time, I will thank both of them, and make a motion to appoint Elaine Haney and Marcus Serta to the governance committee until the completion of the outlined work, or by November 1st, 2025, member terms will last for the further duration of the committee's existence.
I'll second.
Excellent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you both, appreciate it.
Who actually voted for that?
We do, did you?
Yeah, you can vote for yourself.
Thank you. That was unanimous, you can vote for yourself, we're a weird bunch.
Just a quick question, so Regina, are you going to start the ball rolling?
So Brad is staffing this, and he's going to get the ball rolling, well, technically probably Joanne will begin the ball-rolling process and get all the paperwork out to folks, and then we'll go from there. We did identify, we did think at some point that nine made good sense, because there could be some good subcommittee work, so if that comes to be, both sort of myself and Ashley are kind of on the side deck in case there's any benefit, but for myself personally, just don't feel appropriate participating in the, do you want a strong mayor conversation?
Understood.
Do you want to build a snow?
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, thank you both. All right, 5E, correction to the minutes from our last meeting, January 8th. Steve Eustis reached out to just ask us to correct a misspelling of his name on line 216. Should be E-U-S-T-I-S.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I will move that we accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
Great, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Excellent. I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, that passes unanimously.
I'm handing down things to sign from the consent agenda, so we don't forget.
Awesome.
So the first one is everybody's signature at the bottom.
Just kind of on a blank line?
Yep. And then the second one is just you, Raj.
I will be with you after if you need my signature.
Okay, awesome, that's a good, I'll find out from Susan if we can wait on that, that's the certi- That's the certificate of highway mileage that is due, I think it's due on the February 1st.
We actually added some mileage.
We did, yes. So that's, I was going to say that. So this is the first.
Point 161 miles.
Yeah, the traffic connector got us a tiny bit of extra mileage, which is very exciting. This has probably been the exact same data on there for.
25 years.
Yeah.
And line stripper, street sweeper.
Yep. Uh, so manager's report, just, we've said this already, I think, a couple of times tonight, but Saturday event, please come to CBE starting at 11:30 to see lots of different community folks and organizations that we've got. Then we will talk about the proposed FY26 budget. There's going to be a free meal and we are also providing childcare for potty-trained children. So hopefully folks will really come. I think it's going to be exciting. Awesome.
Cool.
That's it.
Okay. Anyone have anything else? No? All right. Well, with that, I'll move we adjourn.
Second.
Wait, maybe I missed it.
You have to move your executive.
Oh, I take that back. I apologize. I wasn't even reading.
Whoops.
Well, then, I apologize to our two candidates for that. Looking for the executive session memo.
And then we'll come back out?
Yes.
Yes. Yep. This, this will be very brief, Logan. Here it is. I got you.
It's going to be very top.
Yep, there we go. All right. I move the city council enter an executive session to discuss the appointment of public officials pursuant to 1DSA section 313A3 to include the city manager.
So moved.
Excellent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are in executive session. Excellent. All right, we're back in session. We have a pair of appointments to make, the recreation advisory committee. I'll move that we appoint Piper Goodkind and Una Osborne to the recreation advisory committee with terms ending on June 30th, 2026. I need a second.
I will second.
Tim seconds. Great. All those in favor say aye.
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 And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much to both. Very excited to see what they end up doing and how they hope. I'll move we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.